Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission Tuesday, March 5th, 2013. First item up is land use actions for discussion and possible action. We have 213 West Elm LLC, a map amendment, PZ 13.1724, requesting review and approval to rezon properties addressed as 119 and 123 South Duncan Street, 213 West Elm Avenue, 102, 106, 120, 126, 132, and 136, South Husband Street, from HR PUD, which is high-rise with planned unit development, RMI, residential multifamily intermediate, RTM, residential two-family, and multifamily districts, to high-rise district, HR high-rise district. Mr. Coots?
Good evening. Tom Coots, Planning Assistant, Development Services. What we have here is an assemblage of several properties currently owned by several owners, which is proposed to be rezoned from, as you stated, the high-rise planned unit development, the RMI residential multifamily intermediate, and the RTM residential two-family and multifamily districts, to just the high-rise HR district. Properties, as I said, just seeking the straight high-rise zoning without a PUD. Right now, a portion of the property is a PUD, planned unit development, and so the planned unit development would go away if this is approved. The north, the properties surrounding it, this assemblage of properties is zoned RMI, the residential multifamily intermediate district. To the east and south portion of it is zoned RMI and RTM residential two-family and multifamily. And to the west, a portion of it is zoned RMI, PUD, and RMI. The proposed high-rise district, just for, to remind you all, allows for a density of up to 150 units per acre, a height of 100 feet, and allows for setbacks of five feet in the fronts, and five feet plus three feet for every story above the first for the side setbacks, and 90 percent lot coverage. We have an air photo of the property. You can see that the property consists of several single-family and multifamily structures. And just for simplicity, every direction all around is, it's surrounded by a mixture of single-family and multifamily structures. And on the west side, you'll also see a church property. The property is bounded by Elm Street to the north, Husband Street to the east, and Duncan Street on the west side. Reviewing this, staff finds that the proposed map amendment appears to be consistent with the corridor redevelopment plan, which calls for, this is such a large piece of property, it calls for a portion of it to be appropriate for high-density housing, and a portion to be appropriate for medium-density housing, or low-density housing, and a portion to be appropriate for actually open space. But this is a large piece of property. And finding number two, the corridor redevelopment plan also designates Husband Street, which joins this property on the east side, as a pedestrian corridor. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom at this time, this item? Okay, thank you, Tom. At this point, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment?
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owners tonight, well, owners and developers, since there are several This property is familiar to some of you. We have come through recently and asked for a PUD on this northern portion of the tract. The owners have since either have under contract or have purchased additional land. And then also since then, the staff have, city staff have come up with a new zoning changes, and so there's actually a high-rise district now. And the corridor redevelopment plan has also been brought forward and supports that type of development here. The vision is to have more students, higher density in this area, since it is closer to The owners were actually able to participate in the creation of that high-rise district and give input, which they were greatly appreciative. And the staff was actually very responsive to it, and they were able to work hand-in-hand in that high-rise district wording. With Husband Street being a pedestrian corridor, the entire site has actually been redesigned from what we proposed in the PUD. And so we are asking that that PUD overlay be completely removed and just be a straight rezone to HR for the entire folded black area. Since, again, like the husband, or, yeah, husband is a pedestrian corridor, the parking garage has been flipped so that the access is actually planned to be in the alleyway, which is Duncan. That way, we don't have all that traffic coming in and out on those heavily anticipated, heavily accessed sidewalks. The main apartments will be kind of L-shaped along Elm and Husband. And there actually plan to be four open-air courtyard areas within the building, and one of those including a pool area. The setbacks that we currently have proposed abide by the HR zoning regulations with five-foot being along Elm and Husband. And then due to the height of the structure that we're proposing, on the south side, if you can see this arrow there, on the south side here, we're anticipating a 14-foot setback, and then five foot, it gets a little bit wider here since of this land jog here, and then 20 foot along those property lines. And over here is actually where we're going to take, we've designed the fire access lane there, so in order to use that 20 foot that we've got to set the building back, we're going to use that 20 foot. And that's where, you know, our utilities, the dumpster, the transformers, and the fire access lane will be accessed there. And then, of course, in that, the arrow went away, in that southwestern corner will be where the parking garage is. By right, we're allowed to go 100 foot tall, but I believe right now we are under 80 feet. And then the density is allowed to be 150 units per acre, and currently at full build-out, we have planned 147 units per acre. So we've kept it under that. And the setbacks, the way this district was designed, that additional three foot on the side yards was really meant to control that density. And that's, it worked really well with the site. We have already done the analysis for the existing water and sewer systems around the site, and they are adequate. And with the full build-out, the surrounding, the current customers are still at the minimum 45 PSI of pressure. The sanitary sewer has the adequate to handle the additional demand, and we've already looked at the stormwater roughly. And we'll be designing the underground pipes in this site as well, in the parking garage. Of course, all of those will be finalized in the final building permit phase, but we're just really excited that there is a zoning classification that we can do this by right if this does get approved. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this map amendment? Anyone else in favor? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the map amendment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's alternatives.
Okay. First, do you have any questions for me before I get started on that? Okay. We can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, or we can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use for the property based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and recommend that the city council deny the map amendment.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion Commissioner?
I move we accept staff findings and recommend the city council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the map amendment as presented. Once, like, it's okay, please place your vote. That is approved unanimously with all seven votes, yes. Okay, moving into plans, policies, ordinances for discussion and possible action, we have considered a Stillwater C3 Plan, Comprehensive, Continuous, Cooperative, the City of Stillwater's 2030 Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening. Paula Dennison, Development Services. It is with greatest of pleasure that I bring before you this evening the 2030 master plan for the City of Stillwater. We're calling it our C3 Plan. I have a brief presentation that I would like to give to the planning commission, and then Patty Evans, project manager for, the update of the comprehensive plan is here to answer any questions that you may have, any specifics of the text or the land use map. I will tell you this before I get into my presentation, when the land use map pops up, we put all of this on the website, had a couple of hard copies, and sent the link out to all of you as planning commissioners. Then we held two community input meetings. In those input meetings, there were over, little over 100 attendees all total for the two meetings. And through the input from the community, we have made changes to the land use map. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation to show you what the changes were made that will be different from the map that y'all saw on the link that was distributed out to y'all a few weeks ago. So we will get to that here in just a moment. Again, this plan is comprehensive, continuous, and cooperative. You'll see, as you read through the plan, as we and the community take the plan and implement it, that it is comprehensive. It covers all facets of growth and development for the City of Stillwater. It is continuous because it's looking out to the year 2030. It's not just hitting today, or tomorrow, or the next year, or decade. It's reaching out to 2030. It's cooperative because we have a number of entities, citizens, interests involved in the development of this comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and at this time, Paula, I might interrupt you, and I'd like to say a few words about the folks that spent two years of their life putting this thing together. I'll start out with staff, of course Paula Dennison, and Tom Coots was also very involved in this. Sherry Fletcher did, I guess, most of the layouts and graphics for the plan. And I think, last but not least, on staff, Patty Evans. I know Patty worked tirelessly to do the research, to help make this happen along with her city advisor, our citizen advisory group. So Patty, why don't you come up and we'll bring you up and get a little special recognition for you here, because I know you worked very hard on this, and just wanted to tell you that on behalf of the citizens and our board, and I'm sure the city council as well, we do appreciate your hard work and efforts on this.
Thank you very much. It was a daunting task at first, and, but I sure appreciate the people that Paula is going to talk to you about on the citizen group that helped me. Without them, I would not have been able to do this, and so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, I'd like to, like to go ahead and name the folks that were involved in the citizen comp plan team, and a few of you are here tonight, so please, if I call your name, please stand up and take the recognition you so well deserve, please. Ron Beard.
Woo-hoo!
All right. Thanks, Ron. Kay Heath, doesn't look like Kay's here tonight. Rusty Craybill is also a member. Jerry Rackley, Kent Sampson, Bayfar, and I'm sorry, Bayfar, I'm going to try my best, Jahan Shahi. Pretty close. Jim Schadler, Marla Rourke, Nigel Jones, Doug MD, Tom Williams.
Woo-hoo!
David Thomas.
Woo-hoo!
Greg Fox, and Josh Pulver. Again, this was a group that, you know, two years, I'm sure, meeting after meeting, put in hard work, and I'll speak more about the plan. I think you guys did an awesome job. Best comp plan for sure Stillwater's ever had. So definitely want to, again, thank everyone for their involvement. I know it's a big commitment. I'm away from their families. We truly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. Patty's right, without these folks, we would not have the plan before you that is for consideration and recommendation to the council from them and us this evening. But don't let them or us fool you. They were very instrumental in helping us develop our corridor redevelopment plan that we are already using, and we're very grateful for their attention to that. And I have many other projects for this group of citizens. So I've already told them, their time is mine. So what is a comprehensive plan? Y'all know what a comprehensive plan is. You use it every time you sit around the horseshoe and the decisions that you make. But just right quickly for the public that's watching through the television, or those here in the audience this evening, it is a vision for the community of Stillwater. It is a set of goals and objectives. If you've had a chance to look through the plan, those goals and objectives are outlined in a single chapter, and then through each of the other chapters, you will see those goals and objectives regurgitated again that support the direction and the guide of the plan. We identify the growth and the demands. We have the existing conditions and resources that we use. Of course, you have to know where you're at before you can know how to proceed to the future. And it's a good narrative with maps, as you alluded to. The visuals in this plan are amazing, and we believe it is extremely user-friendly. It's very fresh. It's full of good ideas. It sets the City of Stillwater on a proper and appropriate path to achieve its goals. So what does the plan do? Here again, it is our guide. It is not the law, it is our guide. My analogy is, the comprehensive plan is our umbrella. We use an umbrella for a number of purposes, but the umbrella is supported only by the spokes of the umbrella. Those spokes are the regulations, or the day-to-day law, that are used to implement this comp plan. And those would be the zoning ordinance that you deal with every time you meet, subdivision regulations that you have before you occasionally, terms and conditions of Stillwater electric utility, the City of Stillwater design and construction standards. We have a lot of laws. Those are the spokes of the umbrella that help support this comp plan and help us achieve the goals and the vision that the comp plan has set before us. The comp plan also identifies ways a community can grow or shrink. Not every community in the state of Oklahoma or this country is growing. Stillwater is growing. Stillwater was the fastest-growing community in the state of Oklahoma between the decennial census of 2000 and the census of 2010. We need to prepare for that growth. We need a guide and a vision to address that growth and accommodate it as it comes along. That's what this comprehensive plan does. It does set forth the expectations. It sets forth the expectations for government, sets forth the expectations for citizens. When Mr. Elsie comes in with the development, it sets forth the expectations that he can utilize and assist him, to use you as an example. Thank you for, thank you for coming and supporting us tonight, too. It also identifies changing conditions, and that's something I'll hit on here in just a minute. So why is a comprehensive plan important? Of course, it sets the course for the community, in our case, to grow and to continue to grow. But there are impacts to that growth, and it helps us prepare for what those impacts are and plan for them. What a catchphrase, planning. Planning and zoning is in here. The comprehensive plan is used in every decision you make as the planning commission for this city, and every recommendation that you send to the city council. The city council also uses the comprehensive plan as the basis, the rational decision-making basis for the decisions that are made. And I really like down in the corner, it identifies where we've been, where we are, where we want to go, and how in the world are we going to get there. So the comprehensive plan, and you, are you affected by the comprehensive plan? Absolutely. We believe the implementation of this comprehensive plan will improve the quality of life in the City of Stillwater. If you do not want your quality of life to be improved, come see me, please. It does anticipate and project changes and growth and needs out to the year 2030. It addresses issues that we are seeing now, and we can anticipate seeing in the future. But I'll tell you this, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know of anyone that has a crystal ball and can specifically identify every single thing that will come about in our future. But the staff here, with the assistance of the citizen advisory team, and you as planning commission, and subsequently the city council when it goes to them, we can anticipate through the evaluation of trends, through things that we know of is going on, through other master plans that have come along and we are privy to, we can anticipate what issues and changes are coming down the pike. And here again, change happens. If anybody in Stillwater can come tell any of us that they have not seen change occurring in the City of Stillwater, please do so, because I believe every one of us knows and can name, you know, 20 fingers' worth of things that have changed just in the recent few years, much less since the current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2001. So, comprehensive plan, it does guide, protect, enhance, identify, and expect. And one thing that we are absolutely true to is, it's our future, but it's our future together, all of us in the City of Stillwater and the surrounding areas, as you will see in just a moment. The plan elements, we do have the introduction, again, goals and guiding principles, that's what I talked about, and they are carried through. They are continuous, comprehensive, and cooperative all the way through the plan with all of these individual plan elements or chapters. So, the land use map. The land use map is a guiding vision of where types of activities and development will occur. It's not our zoning map. Our zoning map is individual properties and what specific uses are allowed on those individual properties. This, as a land use map says, and I will use this for example, you can see a lot of red along Highway 51 and 177, and hit and miss along Main Street and North Washington. Those are the primary commercial corridors for the City of Stillwater. So that's why you see concentrations of red. Red identifies commercial. It does not tell you what uses specifically. Is it a grocery store? Is it a barber salon? That's zoning. That's one of the spokes that helps implement where we envision commercial development to be by the year 2030. We'll get into comparison, if you will give me just a moment, and I'll switch over to the land use map that was in y'all's packet and the changes that we have made. Okay, so, this is the revised land use map here. As you can see, there are some areas that are circled in purple, and I will go through those if you will give me just a little bit of time, and then we'll bump back to the actual presentation. This identifies, and we have taken the community input from the input meetings, and we got emails after the fact. We had a lot of correspondence from a number of citizens throughout the community, and we're extremely appreciative of their attention to this document and the process that it takes. When we received all of the input, we had another called meeting of the comp plan team and gathered them together, and they have blessed these changes that you see before you in the land use map here tonight that we'll go through. Okay, first, and Patty will be able to help me with some streets in through here. This is Perkins and Richmond, thank you. This is the kicker facility right at the corner. The property just east of it, on the north side of Richmond, it was originally high-density, and we have adjusted it to commercial. Sunnybrook Church, item number two, was originally commercial. It's adjusted to low-density. This area, number three, is on the south side of Parkview Estates, and it's actually public property. It's the, I believe, the headwaters of Boomer Lake, but we have adjusted it to park and open space. Number four is that frontage on Perkins Road of that same property. It was public. We have adjusted it to commercial, and...
Do you have the transformer on it? Is that where you are?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Just, this gray right here is going to be national standard.
Gotcha.
And that's it, right there. Number five, right here, where railroad tracks is cutting across, this is commissioner of the land property, and this down here, you're getting into industrial foundation property on the south side of Airport Road. This area here was identified as public. We have adjusted it to industrial. Any questions on that before I move on?
What's the, I did, sorry. Could you flip back?
I'm back.
The yellow coming from Richmond South, west of Perkins?
Yes.
That didn't change, right?
It did not.
It was just the green. Gotcha.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that public land.
I had a hard time with my yellows. That's what I had a hard time looking at. Sorry.
Okay, item number six, again, is Perkins and Mercury. And it was high-density. It has been changed over to commercial. Number seven is this entire area here was high-density. It has been adjusted to low-density. Number eight is going to be the gray over on the east side of, this is Marine Drive that runs between Airport and Lakeview. The gray was high-density. It's been adjusted to industrial. And along the north side of Lakeview, east of Moraine, this is Moraine here, and this is Jardoe. Does it go all the way over to Jardoe? I think it does, or close. This from high-density to commercial. I, yes, sir.
So on the north side of Mercury, you said that's low-density?
Right here, yes, where Aspen Heights is currently being developed.
So is Aspen Heights low-density?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we verified everything currently under construction before we made any, made any adjustments. Okay, these two areas, if you can see the, yeah, the yellows show up pretty well. The paler area up here, this is Brook Hollow, and this, this is on the west side of North Washington before it runs back into Boomer. So you have Brook Hollow, and you have, I do not recall the name of that subdivision, but this blue right across the street is Will Rogers Elementary School. So it's the housing addition on the west side of North Washington Street. That was originally high-density, and it has been adjusted to low-density. And even, we had some questions about this area just before planning commission meeting started tonight, so it has been adjusted appropriately. This property, and Patty, I need you to help me out, please. Looks like this is Highway 51. Oh, no, it's not.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, you're right, McElroy. Sorry, I can't read those little street names. This will be McElroy and Jardoe, because this is Oakdale Park addition here.
Your house, Jay?
The vacant land that has, it's 10 or 15 acres, I believe, has a single house on it. It was identified as commercial. We've taken it back to low-density. And to the east of that, it was identified as public. We have taken it to low-density. And right along McElroy, the north side, out to and right past the city limits... And right along McElroy, the north side, um, out to and right past the city limits, was identified as public, and we have taken that to commercial.
Patty, are these on the website now?
They are not. We have not put these back up on the website, we wanted to see the input of the Planning Commission before we loaded a revised land use plan up and onto the website. Yes, sir.
Can you back up to the previous one, I'm sorry?
Certainly.
So, that, where the green line is there, is that Brush Creek? It's defining the green area?
In this area outside of here, that's the proximity of the creek itself, yes.
Right. So, isn't there housing along that little squiggly white line?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Mhm.
Well...
There's a handful of houses back in there.
Okay, but the front, where you've got it, is commercial, it wouldn't be houses?
Um, no, uh-uh, the...
Maybe there's, I get, I get, you're saying the future, in 2030?
Yes.
You could tear down a house and make it commercial.
Mhm.
Yeah.
Or as the residential growth out there, if there's a huge explosion of residential growth in this area, there may be the demand for some commercial before you actually have to come all the way into Perkins Road.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Country Club, and this dark line across here is city limits. Area fourteen is up at McElroy. It was identified as agriculture. We tried to keep the ag and open space in the land use map following the floodplain of the, of the major creeks that run through town. In some places, we reduced it back down if we had, uh, citizens come in and talk to us about actual plans they had for properties for future development, and that's, um, the reason for this area, just this little bit, taken from ag to commercial. Uh, and the, on the south side along, um, the west side of Country Club, as we all know, Country Club is proposed to be widened, this section of Country Club is, and we believe that that will encourage along its frontage some additional commercial development, so taken from low-density right along Country Club face to commercial. Okay, we've got a couple of them going on here, and I will start here. This is part of the Westwood Neighborhood Overlay, um, part of it is, the other part is, um, residential housing that adjoins and is adjacent to Oklahoma State University, that was high-density, we reduced it down to low-density. Over in this area of town, this is Third Avenue on the north and Lewis Street on the west side, and it's, goes down to Fifth and sort of jogs back around. That area was actually identified originally as low-density and commercial, but because of its prox, its proximity to downtown, to bus, to Third Avenue that cuts almost through the city, um, we think that it should develop and will encourage development of it in more of a high-density than low-density. Uh, number eighteen in this area, and this is, um, I believe that's Virginia, yeah. Behind...
Behind Walmart?
Behind Walmart, yes. Uh, was identified as high-density, it has been changed to low-density.
Really?
Number nineteen out here was public, and it has been changed to university. And then, number twenty, we had a number of folks contact us and through email, through phone calls, and even come to the community input meetings about the area around the hospital, and, um, we have adjusted that to indicate additional public as well as commercial. Commercial will encourage not just your pharmacies, but also medical offices or any health or social assistance provider in that area. So, we think, we thought that was a great catch by, by folks who are taking a look, and again, we appreciate everybody taking a look. And this is the Payne County Fairgrounds, this is Highway 51 and Fairgrounds Road, and currently, um, everything had been identified just to encompass the actual structure of the fairgrounds, but we extended it on up to, I believe that is McElroy for that whole area in there as public from low-density. South of town on, um...
Sanger.
Sanger and...
South of Little and Trail.
Yes, thank you. Uh, had been identified as high-density, and we have dropped that back to low-density. And those are the changes on our land use map. And again, we appreciate the input, we have run it by our comp plan team, and they, um, have put their seal of approval on this land use map before you. Any questions on it before I switch back over?
Just a comment, uh, that I really appreciate, the public coming out and...
Yes.
Actually reviewing this, taking the time to email, come to the meetings, and put their input in, and, uh, that's great, that's why we do this, this is what the comp plan's for, so appreciate all the public as well.
Paula, where did they break high and low-density?
Where do we break it in the...
What was the numbers?
Um, there's a little bit of crossover, because low-density is up to twenty units per acre, according to the comp plan and identified in the land use map, and high-density is twelve units per acre on up to a hundred and fifty. So, the, the overlap there, we have a number of zoning districts that properties could be zoned to fit in the, in the, um, in the overage area, but for the purposes of planning, of course, we weren't going to have high one, high two, high three, low one, low two, low three, anything like that, because the plan, again, is not the actual zoning designations. So, having just the two residential zoning designations, the low, which is one to twenty, and then the high, which is twelve to a hundred and fifty, that, that we think was the best thing to do. And the comp plan team was, helped us in that too, because we had the whole discussion of high, medium, low, extra-low, low, sort of medium, really medium, really high, low, high, you know, we had a lot of those discussions. And commercial and industrial, I mean, those discussions went all the way through every type of impact and development, and this is, this is what we have all become very comfortable with.
And Paula, if you don't mind, I might just add a comment a little bit for the, for the commissioners as well. Again, remember that a comp plan is a guide, it, it's not the law, it's not the way it's going to be necessarily, it's a guide for the future, and I want to make sure that, uh, that, that all of us don't get too bogged down in the minute details of this. It's not meant for that, it's meant as an overall, as Paula mentioned, umbrella, it's something to, to kind of shoot for at this point, and, you know, at, at some point, it will be updated as we go along, as things happen, but again, I just want to make sure we all don't get bogged down in minute details, because that's not what this is for, this is an overview, so, thank y'all.
I will right quickly give you staff's findings, and these are in your report, I do not have a slide for them. We find that the current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2001, any changes have occurred in and around Stillwater since the O-one plan adoption. The comp plan is a critical guide to decision-making in Stillwater, it should be updated more frequently. The comp plan through implementation should help with improving the quality of life in Stillwater. The C-three plan is a result of city staff and Stillwater citizens' work, and the plan looks to the year 2030, and those are staff's findings. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions, if there's anything specific, I'm going to let Patty cover that one for us.
Okay, one quick question for you, Paula.
Yes.
Item number four on your findings, the comp plan should be updated more frequently.
Yes, sir.
The current one, or 2001, fast forward to 2013, what, as we move forward, what staff's idea of revisions, how many years out?
We are committed and have, um, the city's commitment to update this plan no more than every five years. Uh, that's why I've got all of my team committed.
Sealed for the ten years.
Through eternity, yes, I do. Um, we, there, there are so many changes that can occur in short periods of time, we've seen our entire community make radical changes just since the O-one plan was adopted. When I came on board in O-four, my first task was not to update the comp plan, because it was three years old. My first task was to bring the 1966 subdivision regulations and the 1985 zoning regulations more up-to-date. And as y'all know, we have had text amendment after text amendment after text amendment come through, adopted the Land Development Code in 2008, still have text amendments coming through, but we are comfortable enough with the, the law and the code part, i.e. the spokes of the umbrella, that it, it was time to address the comprehensive plan. So, our commitment, again, is no further out than every five years. If we see radical changes or trends that we have not been able to anticipate, then we can look at it in two years after it's adopted, or three, or four years and a month, or whatever the case may be. It will come through similar process, staff will review the trends and the changes first, then we'll call our citizen team together, Planning Commission, and subsequently City Council for adoption of any changes to this plan. But thank you for asking.
Any other questions right now for Paula? Okay, thank you, Paula.
Yes.
For the presentation. Okay, I guess at this point, we'll go ahead and open up, uh, the public hearing, uh, if there's anyone out here who would like to come up and just, uh, speak about this, we'd love to hear your input. Um, it's really not going to be a for or against, just a comment, so either way, anyone like to come up and speak. Okay, seeing, then I'll, uh, close the public hearing portion, and, uh, is Patty going to come up and speak with us, Paula, or is that...
Certainly.
Well, if you have any questions about the, the document itself or the land use map, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioner?
I, I just have one very, very minor thing.
Yes, sure.
And that's on page nine dash four, you say the plans for Attica Village where all of the universities at Attica Village will go, it needs to be most.
And that has been changed.
Okay, great. That's just a very minor thing.
No, great.
No, uh...
Shows you're right.
Yeah. No, Nigel caught that and, uh, gave that to me, so it has been changed.
Appreciate that.
I do have one question, um, in reading the, uh, looking at the tables of the transportation projects that were listed over the next seventeen years as, you know, short-term or long-term projects, are those projects the same projects that are listed in the step, or were they modified based on, you know, the step was done five years ago?
No, those were ta, taken straight from the step.
Straight out of the transportation, okay.
Any other questions for Paula? Patty, I'm...
That's okay.
It's been a long Tuesday.
I'll answer to anything, you know, that's fine.
Call you anything, just once we called you for supper, right? Well, again, thank you, great document, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, for anyone watching, this is it, it's a hundred and fourteen or so pages of, as I indicated, narrative and maps and charts and graphs, and it's extremely fresh and user-friendly, so, stillwater.org, Document Center, Master Plans, and then you will see the Stillwater C-three Plan on there, so take a look at it. We will be, um, after the recommendation of the Plan Commission tonight, and we get the final couple of textual corrections in the plan, we will be updating it and putting the revised document as well as the revised land use map up on the website for everybody to take a look at before it goes to City Council.
Paula, will there be any hard copies available for folks to, to look at?
There is currently a hard copy of the original, the unchanged, the original that we produced, um, available here at City Hall on the second floor, Development Services Center, and there's also one at the library, at the Stillwater Public Library. Once, um, we have this body's recommendation, we will make a couple of other updated and fresh revised changes, uh, and documents, full documents printed out, and we will have those available at the same locations.
Great, thank you.
Of course, anyone can, um, call in to the Development Services Center, and there is a small cost to the plan itself, um, because of all the color and everything in it, um, but we'll be more than happy to make copies.
Okay.
For anyone that needs them.
Great, thank you.
And if you have no other questions, um, staff, you have two alternatives, uh, you can accept our findings and recommend that the council adopt the Stillwater C-three Plan as presented, or adopt it with any amendments or modifications. And if you do have any amendments or modifications, if you would allow me to suggest that we would just attach those, not make the changes in the document, but attach them for the council's consideration of the change to accompany the document itself.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Discussion commissioners, are there any, any major holes or, or things that, that we need to, to attach to this, uh, recommendation going forward?
I haven't seen a lot of these, but I thought it was an interesting marketing piece for our city.
I think it very well did.
Hell, a lot of people put a lot of work into it, and I like the public input that we got as well, I think that's going to be a positive.
Definitely. Chair, would any kind of motion?
Well, before that, I, I'd just like to make a comment, I would like to thank everybody that's done it, I've been sitting here for a long time, I think Dusty's the only older person than I am up here, but at least he's taller. Anyway, I always considered the comp plan as, about the day that, the day that you print it, it almost comes obsolete like, um, electronic device, if you will, because it is a vision and a plan, and things happen in reality different sometimes than what you color in the lines. But I love the freshness of this, I think it's the best one I've ever seen, and it really is a very valuable tool, especially for Planning Commission, we probably use it more than anybody else when people come to us for zoning and we see how it's laid out. And we deal with text amendment and the Land Development Code, and like I said, I, I've, I've been privy to, this is my third one, that I've paid attention to, and this is actually more liquid and a better document than what I've ever seen and where I really think growths are. And I will say that where it didn't just get colored in, where we had industry, you thought about it, and you went and looked, and I just appreciate it from the bottom of my heart, and the next time we get in a hot seat up here, we're going to blame you on the color. So, I just want to make sure I understand, Mr. Williams, which color we're using, so... Anybody that's colorblind can no longer set on this shoe, I guess, is what you're trying to tell us, but with that, again, I, I sincerely thank you, and it will help us, and this body in particular will remember you, and because you were held hostage, if we don't like the color or we see a trend coming, you will be back quicker than three years. We don't have to be an obsolete stereo system, so, thank you.
Thanks, Witten. Any other comments?
I move we accept staff's finding, recommend the City Council adopt the Stillwater C-three Plan as presented.
And I would second that.
A motion of second to adopt the, uh, the plan as presented.
Okay, Mr. Lane's going to use this one.
Use this one?
I don't want it out.
Did you abstain, Dusty?
No, my wife didn't care more.
I'm slightly in her mom, but mine did.
Did we get there? Nope.
Uh, no, but, Mr. Lane, will you verbally?
I will verbally vote yes.
Okay. The vote to support is a unanimous yes.
All right, great, thanks again, everyone.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action. Uh, it looks like we have, uh, first, the meeting, or the minutes from the January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second to approve those minutes.
Okay, we'll give you this time.
Yep, please place your votes.
Chair, I did abstain, I was absent.
Thank you. Okay, so, that's si, that's a six yeses and one abstention. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, the meeting summary of February nineteenth, uh, two thousand thirteen, and the changes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second for approval.
Sorry, who seconded it?
Joe.
Joe did.
He's so quiet down there somewhere.
Been calm tonight.
Yeah.
Settle down, Joe.
Please place your votes. That is, uh, approved unanimously, unanimously, all votes yes. Uh, next item, um, looks like our next Planning Commission meeting is, uh, March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. With that, uh, the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion, a second. We are adjourned.